Yes, thank you, Chair. The reason we're here tonight is pretty well summarized as follows. We look forward to presenting the recommended budget for review and discussion by the Mayor and City Council if we together renew our commitment to the long-term sustainability of the Southfield as an independent and thriving municipality and consider the proposed budget in that context. As I was preparing for this evening, I thought I would contact history books a little bit to get in the mood, to get some wisdom. First, I looked at Madison Station with Mr. Churchill, and Mr. Churchill said, "Gentlemen, we've run out of money, now we must change." And I think we in fact have been thinking hard and long since 2004, first five-year financial plan when we really looked into the future and knew we had challenges, but of course, no one knew the magnitude of the challenge. But I think again, we're ready to dig in this evening. And I did also, I didn't think that was enough, so I think maybe I needed to get some help from another source, so I looked into Albert Einstein, he's got lots of books. And he says the following, he said, "In the midst of difficulty lies opportunity." And we've got the difficulty and we've got to work for the opportunity. He said, "One should not pursue goals that are easily achieved. One must develop an instinct for what one can just barely achieve through one's greatest efforts." We are certainly in that direction. We're right on point there. And imagination is more important than knowledge. Knowledge is limited, imagination circles the world. So we know, as we said, we have to create a new approach. And then he said, "Not everything that can become, it counts. Not everything that counts can become." That's certainly true. We have to think of the intangibles, and we do. This is part of the reason that we have fought hard to avoid layoffs in the city because we think of the world at large, people and their families, and we try to reduce the misery index not accurate. Then he said, "The hardest thing to understand is the human test." And I thought, "Well, isn't the second hardest assessing data and assessing practices?" Then he said, "Politics is far more complicated than business." Finally, he said, "Everything should be made as simple as possible, but not ones that are simpler." With that, I have an exhibit I would ask the City Clerk to ask around to yellow sheet that you received there. Would please? I'm hoping in this exhibit that we can take some of the issues that we've been discussing for quite a while and reframe them with some data, which will make us more effective at telling that story. The complexities that surrounds our situation and need to be framed, I believe, in a way where we can, we should be more effectively tell our story and hopefully get some changes and approaches on the legislative level. A starting, a good starting point would be of course, commitment to full funding, replacement funding, bringing personal property tax losses that might come out of the legislation that is currently being considered. So what I did is I, my main theme here is that these cities are creating jobs, cities like ours, cities like Troy, cities like Farmington Hills, the last significant commercial development, an office development, industrial, are getting hammered, and those that are in a basically veteran community have just unfortunately, you know, at least not as much as yet. So I thought I would take three cities that are well-known for their commercial activities and are near us nearby, as well as a well-run nearby city that is ninety-seven percent residential and three percent commercial. If you look at the data, you will see that since 2000 beginning and 2009, 2010, we've had four successive years of some rather significant and serious deep downward tax or value. The main reason for that is on combination of residential and commercial. But if you look at 2012, 13, we have a figure of eleven percent, and that bears some discussion. That's the price of the six point four percent in our total tax base that the assessor has on the rolls as of January 31st, 2012. However, we know that there are a number of commercial appeals in process, and we have to recognize potential liability for those appeals. And that is four point six percent or we present a commercial percentage of that. But for the eleven percent, so you'll see that the city that has the greatest amount of commercial, that's us, with thirty-seven percent residential, sixty-three percent commercial and other, commercial, other is industrial, personal property. So you see that we're taking the accumulate, say forty-one point nine percent dip in a four-year period. And frankly, 2013, 14, we're looking at potentially hundred eighty-five percent. So if you look at Troy, basically Troy is sixty-one percent residential, thirty-nine percent commercial, so they still have a significant commercial tax base. The state is getting over twenty-four percent yet in the next four years. I'll take a look at Farmington Hills. Farmington Hills is sixty-five percent residential, thirty-five percent commercial, and they have taken yet thirty-four point two percent. Then we look at Huntington Woods, and we see they're ninety-seven percent residential, three percent commercial, and I venture to say very small percentage of their commercial with personal property. So they're, although I know they care because they show up at various professional association meetings, and they always contribute to the discussion, they have a good reputation, they pay well on the city, and if they don't have much at issue when it comes to personal property, we do. Fifteen percent of our tax base is commercial, are just personal property, and as we'll see later, there's a significant debt. In 2013, 14, we are anticipating a seven hundred fifty thousand dollars debt due to elimination of all personal property for businesses with under forty thousand dollars of taxable value in personal property, personal property versus machinery equipment used in business. And so that means that any business with under eighty thousand dollars worth of taxable value is one half of the market value, with the excluded non-civilized businesses. So that's seven hundred fifty in year one, and there are no plans, that we're aware of, to replace any of those funds. So we take a look at Troy, twenty-four percent, Farmington Hills thirty-four, and nine point six for a community ninety-seven percent residential. During that time, they did have a tax increase, the Huntington Woods did. As a matter of fact, their total tax taxable value, or the total property tax mileage is twenty-five, so it's more than hers. So there, when the newspapers write up their budget for 2012, 13, there's some interesting information. It says, "All cities have quite a bit of financial uncertainty going forward," the city manager said, "but we have been fortunate that we haven't faced the same measure, the same massive cuts that others have." Then they talk about their workforce being reduced by thirty-seven percent to ninety ninety. Our figure is twenty-four percent, the world统计二零一四二零一四年，so to go back to nineteen ninety, I'm sure that we're probably outpaced in those kinds of numbers. They talk about continuing concessions, we're going to be talking about the same thing. Tax revenues are projected to be up. That's a combination of, they didn't get much of it yet, because they had a mileage increase. Then they say things that would be nice to be able to say, such as, things seem to be loving off, the property bills appear to be stabilizing. Looks like the great recession is in there, the brighter days are ahead. We look forward to being able to verbalize those in the past. They talk about road crimes and road concerns about road issues, we share those. And they think they want to get streets done faster, let the period pass and we can replace them. Totally agree with that. So all municipalities have things in common, and any responsible municipality is basically concerned with infrastructure and roads, and everyone's in coagulation. Certainly, the road financing, which is at the same levels it was ten years ago, is poorly managed. You talk about the summer product shoots have increased dramatically, and the cost of one lane mile of road is increasing three percent in the last ten years. With that, I think what we can do with this is, I think we can assert that the current mix of legislation and taxation creates an adverse situation and frankly punishes the job creators, that it's unfair and unbalanced, and I'm hoping that this kind of information will help us be able to send our message more effectively. With that, I'd like to turn to the booklet, open the highlights, we're moving into the pages, and again, we go again to answer your questions and concerns, as I say, my best effort to create a thought, creative approach. The big picture for us in terms of what we're facing, on that, the city's fifty-plus years history, we've never had an increase of even three percent of our taxable values. The three percent was the starting figure in nineteen, and each year, successive years, that topic, we're talking about basically forty-two percent in this point in four years. Uncharted waters, the uncertainty created by the commercial appeals is an especially difficult challenge for us. We're going to have to constantly monitor and follow them, going to have probably more budget adjustments than we've had in the past. We will have an adjustment at the end of this fiscal year to ensure that we break the reserves that we need to forward into the business, so that we don't have any funds that have a technical deficit, because that causes the state, causes us extra work and is a negative as far as the state's concerned. The details of the plan, the key details, we have not used fund balance for operations. We'll see later that the reserve is dropped, but that is for the reserves of fields, commercial fields. General fund expenditures are down a million, seven or two and a half percent. Total budget, sixty-eight point four versus sixty-six point seven previous year. Total budget is essentially flat, difference of two hundred and thirty, about two eighty-eight is basically has to do with grants and recent cable races through the franchise. Infrastructure investments are up nearly two million and twenty-five percent. Public works has descended us with twenty projects, totally ten million, O one O, and that's an increase of twenty-five percent over the eighteen projects that we had planned for 2011, 12. Continued emphasis on community appearance and voter enforcement. We're going to be asking for a minor ordinance change in the future. This year, the weather got us behind a little bit, since there's certain guys who have been involved in the month of May, we've been talking about it forward to April. That will be coming forward as we have to move towards yet, but we are very much concerned with keeping the appearance of the city, and with any major homes, not having appearance of payment. Training remains funded. We're asking people to do more of the less, I know that, the old slogan, or old phrase, but it's true, and you can't do that effectively without providing the necessary skills. In terms of revenues, we are projecting an eleven percent decline in our taxable values. Six point oh four percent for the tax rolls, that's Mr. Piterina's tax roll figure as he submits, submitted on January 31st. We have agreed that it's reasonable to put a allowance in of roughly five percent for tax appeals, that will be our responsibility after January 31st. They carry all the way through on fiscal year. So the fund balance draw is from the equalization reserve that is set aside, annual deals, we can't get detail coming up on that. Charges are up two plus three percent, and that basically is a function of a duty that we instituted in assessing this piece of it for transfers, that file, and then state share revenues are up almost eight percent, and that's because we were successful in getting a hundred percent of the EBID, economic vitality incentive program monies. We weren't sure when we saw that they, that we could achieve a hundred percent, so this fiscal year, the budget was only half of that money. But next year, we feel that we are going to get a hundred percent, and so we increased the statutory state share revenues and constitutionally increased two percent because of the modest improvement in time. So we perceive that we need to focus on tax base enhancement while simultaneously reducing operating costs as the key to the city's long-term sustainability and independent and thriving municipality. Return to page three, the equalization reserves for field. I might add, we have very few residential deals, simply because of the decline in the residential values, which such that most folks understand the situation, and cannot come in for a few more parts off, their taxes, the city, there's, I see that nobody in there aware of that. So most of our fields are in the commercial area, and we have set aside in the general fund, four, probably seven hundred eighty thousand, nine fifty-six, so we're going to program to use almost half of that in the next year, hopefully in the last year. That's what we feel, this is the worst three years that we've had, which has run a lot. Then you have a number that I wanted to draw your attention to, the box, four on the eighty-fifth, that is the unassigned general fund unbuilt, which is eight tenths of one percent, just about as tight as you can run a ship. The minority agencies like to see ten percent, slightly less than one percent, and the Government Finance Officers Association likes to see twenty percent. So we have to tightly manage things, we are doing so. We anticipate that in this fiscal year, we will have a favorable variance for budget, meaning that we will outperform the budget. When the auditors come to take a look at where we are at June 30th for operations, we believe we will outperform the budget, given number of changes during the fiscal year, and we can ask for that. Showed below are the reserves of the various, quote-unquote, outside departments, departments other than the general fund. Major streets has a reserve, locals, parks, rec, and library. The total was set aside for these appeals, it was near seven hundred dollars. I might add, when we do a budget adjustment this year, if we bring money out of these pots, various budgets, okay, the reason we're doing it at the end of the year is to keep it spent, only to be expended, not that you can do, you know, do a lot of these limitations there, and also the numbers, the people closer to the end, or the numbers will be, but if we bring money into the budget that is not needed for the deals, that money falls right back in to the equalization reserves, the various funds. So I don't know a lot, so we have a comfort level that we make these adjustments, that we don't want to come short, because then you get a technical deficit, then it gets reported to the state, the state sends a letter, then you have to respond to the plan, it's extra, it's an extra effort, it's a negative on the city. So we are going to bring it about this day. One of the things that a responsible government does is looks at infrastructure constantly, and does what they can do on the infrastructure side, and not just operations on the street services. We have ten million dollars of capital projects planned. Nothing's automatic about these projects. We'll counsel through the budget, that there's been on the authority to do anything except connect council, and it does give the purchasing agent and working, the harvest engineering et cetera, to work on bits, but everything comes back to city council and has to be re-justified, this is the plan. We're looking at a million six in major street work. Most of these are projects that are either federal or state government, and we have a small piece in comparison. Generally, we're a little fifty percent, usually around ten to twenty-five percent is our participation level. So we are getting a lot of work done for our million six. Water and sewer is in good shape. Frankly, they've always filled the capital portion in their budget, good for them. They deserve a lot of credit for that, and in times when the times are a little bit better, we boost the capital up a little, and so this year, we're hammering the rates down. They got nearly a nine percent pass through of the agencies, the flat water, sewer, the services, and we are going to get the cost to the, to the sewer for the customer, no increase of more than five percent. So we'll be working together on that, just because people are hurting, number five percent is a lot worse than the number close to nine percent. So the detail of each project, there's a paragraph on each, there's elements that we review, any time, people will be coming back to these discussions when we come back to council with particular projects. Transmittal letters are required for charter, that's about six days, nine weeks, okay. They reflect the priorities and concerns that aren't embedded within the whole budget. The mayor runs, reviewed, the transmittal letter, and the CFW meeting that letters were designed for thorough connection to budget, thorough discussion of the budget, and the transmittal letter, yeah, they're going to, both of us were reading, but that was the question, the transmittal letter, it's a lot of material in it that is high priority, and this is a little bit suggestions. Working ahead to the next section, which is, sorry, the language, this is our annual page on the budget, all of them based, and our reflects areas which provided the budget. And we'll get into each, appreciate the components, but anything that has varied for five percent of the budget, but we also, as we did last year, supported reference, or range of reference. Page eight. Okay, so what you see on the left side of revenues is point four, six oh, five eight six for off the fund out. That is for, certainly for fields, and if it's not necessary, falls, falls back in. There's a similar amount, a similar amount in the outside fund, for example, the library has two and a half, about six thirty for field costs, parks and rec, over fifteen thousand. So they're dividing for fields, and frankly, they're also paying for fund balance for operations. They're working to get out of that. They do have a stronger fund balance posture, so there is some tolerance for them using some fund balance at this point, but they're well aware that the goal is that the operations of any department should not be using fund balance. Fund balance should be for one-time projects of a capital nature or a contingency nature. What does happen in the process is we find two of these numbers, and June 18th, we come back with any changes that are documented, and normally, they're not very significant. The city assessor's numbers get reviewed by the county investing, right? And they come back, and usually they don't do one, they may make a change here and there, but the numbers that Piterina submits get approved, and they get one classification or one point old factor, which is what you want, that's your assessment, you're good. In our history, we've only received one factor aware of, and in fact, they said, you know, that nine years ago, their assessments were, that had low, so money doesn't, we said, "Okay, but we're setting that money aside for the projects." And we do do that, and that's how we use those numbers. So we just get one factor on our assessment. Block grant will be changed, should be adjusted to eleven, that case, we'll have to reprogram funds, we didn't have those numbers at the time, so that will be adjusted. SP has increased, that is due to N S three three, and that was a word that's basically of the merits of performance, okay, that's huge. You see, the total is essentially flat for last year. You see, the total is essentially flat for last year. Any increase basically to grants, and you'll see later, this is a significant increase in cable, and it's because of new revenues. Turning to page twenty. Looking at our millage, and our revenue is created by millage. Millage is six point six oh nine four, this is for general operations. That's the rollback to seven percent, or seven mills, for at a charter maximum. The rollback is submitted heavily, be tested heavily in years whenever agents roll. Police and fire, rollback seven, six point eight nine oh six, and, uh, that is the same Total of thirteen point five for operations. Police and fire, catch it, nearly four mills. That's actuarial requirements. Those funds are single purpose and not used for any other reason. And we have a habit here of obeying our actuaries. Some cities take what actuarial reports, that's the one area of trouble. So, we may, we may, we may challenge the actuaries, but when the exercise is done, whatever number they give us is, is what we're, is how it is. Residential street millage, maintenance, one mill. What we did with that is when we had the public safety, millage increased, uh, successful election, we did a heavily override in the middle of that language, and so, we got residential streets up to one mill. That's their max. Parks and rec, we got up to their, their, their max, one point seven five, and library had an increase of two point eight. Public Act two ninety-eight, this section referred to as, you quote, a whole garbage millage, and we use those for actual cleanup, uh, appearance issues on our roadside. Fifty-nine is a new millage. For some, a number of years, uh, cities have been allowed to assess, uh, uh, ten, up to fifty million dollars for, for its tax base, tax base growth. So, now, we've, uh, we've done, uh, defined the need for it, now, we're using, we're, we're incorporating it in. It's a very small number, it's way over the right of the decimal, but it's why you see it, a new source listed, two ninety-eight slash fifty-nine. Drains at large, uh, that's the increase that we're going to, on the next page, give to, uh, changes, and apply to their, what they, what the council changes. The county drains at large is the drains that, uh, that were responsible for funding, service maintenance, and debt. Small numbers, you can see on the next page, it is an increase substantially. Taxable valuations, we use for this purpose, eleven percent reduction. The top number is what we live off of, basically. That's what, what all the funds, uh, have to use as their basis for their, for their tax revenues. Now, the other numbers have to do with the independent agencies such as PEA, they have their own funding source. We can show them all down to eleven. When you look at the previous numbers, and when we get into, uh, the final numbers, it becomes a phase, uh, these guys, some of these numbers, Tommy, for the, so, some of these outside agencies have to be, but we're using eleven percent tax increase for the top number, which is what we fund the general fund, P and R Library, et cetera. But next page, you'll see that the only changes are for the actual requirements, please pay attention, on a substantial. And that has to do with, was, uh, excluding effect, four-year look-backs on investments. You've got investments in there, uh, you've got, uh, other factors, uh, I believe also in this reduction in the number of people participating, causes the rate gap to a lot of, the rate is nine each, each in one, basically, I think, there's, uh, there's a danger. Public Act two ninety-eight is up slightly. We talked about that, drains and wires is up substantially. The reason for that is maintenance on aging drains, county water resource repairs, we can't ignore the infrastructure. And I guess, like the boss, you will, what happens if you don't deal with this? It's erosion, malfunctions, possible road pullouts, uh, we are closely monitoring this, it's a significant increase. When you see the total, uh, that's lovely, uh, we are up four point eight percent, but the full residence valuation is down seven percent, full residence is slightly decreased. Page twenty-two is the twenty-year history of the millage. You will see that we are at, um, high level of twenty years, again, functions, that are, the other side of the equation, millage times value, times taxable value, we can't make equal revenues, uh, that, that's, that's, that's the interest. We have to overcome the tax base, which is basically, we look forward to the day when tax base is increased, because we can reduce the levy. Next page, basically, uh, the clarity, the tax dollars, all or what they cover, uh, it's just, uh, the job of the public safety, it's reasonable to take the tax revenues and say, well, uh, their first line of public safety, whatever, let hold it, with the other functions. Basically, the public, uh, essentially, pretty much takes care of the public tax revenues, the general fund, the tax light, doesn't make it run, it's simply, we have to understand, but the rest of the functions, uh, are funded by state shared revenues, fees and charges, and the, and corporate itself, or, or corporate revenues, generally match core expenses, or maybe recover their expenses, usually. So, basically, what, what, what the other functions count on is state shared revenues and fees. So, this is why we're so down, uh, downhearted on state shared revenues, because they're forty percent less than they were ten years ago, even though they've increased eight percent this year, and they're worse than forty before. So, we're hoping they're on their way up. We've got a long way to go to get to the level that they were ten years ago. In terms of our police and fire, uh, right now, our, our generally accepted, uh, numbers for sworn police and fire, which were re-justified, or at least reviewed, by the studies, uh, hundred fifty, eighty, hundred six firefighters. We currently have on staff, one hundred thirty-four sworn, uh, and, uh, the fire, uh, hundred six, we have ninety-two, down fourteen, that's thirteen percent. The rest of the city, the channel is down about twenty-five percent from the levels of two thousand, four, five, six. Next, return to the, page twenty-four. Tax revenue factors, uh, general operating, costing us, or the funds that we don't have to work with, almost two hundred dollars in general, two general operating millage, et cetera, down, down the list. The only, the only increases of the police and fire millage revenues equals into the police and fire millage counts, and future, you know, purpose. Page twenty-five, it's a breakdown of where the tax revenues go for the, uh, the, the home, value down to hundreds of thousands, next to value fifty thousand. Eight forty-three is police fire, EMS, we, Parks and Rec, eighty-six is the most appears in drains, library one forty, all other twenty-nine. That's, uh, about three, just three and a quarter a day, actually, around three dollars a day, this shit for home now, this value, that's a little less than a hundred, so if you, that's the value you're resting on. So, you're looking at three dollars a day, and I think you deliver, and you're probably going to spend, uh, very, uh, property tax, dollar distribution, typical home, uh, forty, forty percent goes to the city, sixty percent to other purposes, including county, uh, the jurisdictions, uh, and, uh, sixty percent. Page twenty-seven, the three assumptions that we work with, uh, state shared revenues are upper O and E projections, and we anticipate we'll call the EPIC dollars this year up the end, and we're on target, with the monitoring, the new rules. They apparently, they're supposed to be more user-friendly, the only problem is when you read it, you can't figure out. However, we, what we do is we, we deal directly with the treasury department, we use their forms, their format, their approach, it's sort of the ones that write the checks that work through a lot. Treasuries projections for investment income, everyone knows we're at record low interest rates, and a record low interest environment. That's good if you're selling bonds, for example, uh, which is something you may have to look at, but I'm not sure it's feasible at all, but I have, I have sent a call into our bond company, to, to, uh, let's be creative, so that we can look at, look at. Because we're in a record low, uh, environment, uh, we will become helpful to, uh, to re-market bonds that we have, because they can be worth, so that will be something, uh, library, natural library, uh, bonds. No, no, that's a, that's a, that's a fire, a fire line, a weak one, we can call it. So, we'll become helpful for that, and that will save us money. Unbalance for oper, no use of unbalance for operations in the general fund, parks and libraries, driving to be in the same situation in the future. Zero percent, obviously, concessions to be discussed, and I have a decent homework that we, we do, mayor and city council, uh, during, uh, the, the, the. Management tritium program continues, uh, more aggressive monitoring of economic conditions than ever before, uh, that's, that's going to be it. Five-year financial planning focus, one of the things we'll be doing, uh, in the next month or so, is we will be updating the five-year plan, adding the year out, and, uh, requesting the audited numbers from the last audit, as well as once this budget's through, we'll be working on that budget by different. Next, we're familiar with this, uh, reduce our personnel count, uh, this is, this is a rather rigorous exercise, so I'll say about, in three positions. You get an FTE, uh, the order person who heads of this FTE, uh, after an FTE, and things that you get into, like the parks and rec, which is real complicated, uh, but we make a good payment, that, we're down about twenty-four percent, uh, to probably four. The next exercise we go through is, uh, on the revenue side, and the expenditure side, we take a look at, by comparison, previous year, and we create footnotes for anything over five percent. Everybody's going to ask any question about any percent, uh, but, but five percent is our threshold, and footnotes are there, ones that you probably need to take over, these real quick. We know the eleven percent, that has to do with tax values. Number three is the pension, we already talked about. Number four, state shared revenues, that's because we got the EDIP money to increase statutory significantly, uh, constitutional, it goes up two percent. Constitutional is a reflection of the economy, statutory is the EDIP, so that's, uh, good. Um, number five, reimbursements is a technical adjustment, a different way of showing, they figure, it has no meaning in real life. Number six is fees, licenses, and permits, and that reflects the fifty thousand new revenues, uh, being charged, not the transfer fees, also increased in, uh, parents' revenues, primarily, uh, on the, on the dated homes, uh, if you charge tanks for, uh, work, we do on dated homes, uh, that's, 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 uh, number seven, inter-fund reimbursements, uh, that's a change in, that's a technical adjustment, decrease in cross-charges, it's a good thing, we're making the budget less complicated, and also, we can't cross-charge for employees in our business anymore, so that number gets smaller. Uh, number eight is the most significant, and that is that we're, um, budgeting the equalization reserve for commercial deals, and, uh, so that's, uh, that's an increase. That is because we uncross it on the level, uh, which reflects, actually reflects, with the slight US economy, but people are feeling, they're feeling because they have vacancies or they have issues of income in their buildings, and they have to move these appeals off, they have to move the economics of it. We put our case forward, they put theirs forward, and it is, it is, it's back to life in this moment, uh, we're hoping to do this, uh, this for year. The, the approach that we had taken previously is that we, uh, had had previous budget, we assumed that we could, uh, absorb most of the appeal costs by saving to the budget, uh, we're, we know we're coming in under, under budget, but we don't think we're going to be enough to cover all of the, uh, costs and utilities of bills, so that's why we will likely be putting a little adjustment, uh, in our, in our budget, uh, next month. Looking at the expenditure side, uh, we've got, number one is, uh, if you have a small budget, uh, you're going to see a massive deduction, it has to do with a person, uh, from the family plan to a single plan, uh, number two, uh, that is, uh, reserve for appeals, uh, the other side of the, uh, side, uh, the human resources, that's the nutrition, uh, state, 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 nutrition, uh, community relations, same thing, uh, vacancy for nutrition, they were an information specialist, Terry Case, retired, and we are, we taking his work, massage it around existing, uh, personnel, and the rules, it's all, it's covered, and if you question whether it's covered or not, we give you a vigorous, a vigorous answer that it's covered. Mayor's budget's down a little, thank you, Mayor, contribution, uh, it's actually good. If you have a small, uh, budget, sometimes it's, uh, small, adjustments upward, show pluses, so this time, it goes up. Police budget down, that's vacancies, nine, so one day. Fire budget isn't down as much, because their name has been current over several years, so, we've got a fire budget only at one percent. That's a great direction, zero. Uh, buildings down thirteen point nine, that is state seats for nutrition. Um, public works administration, uh, that goes down to zero because the folks aren't there to charge the other folks, that's nutrition. So, uh, meantime, they keep getting the work done, uh, thank you very much. Uh, overall, we're down two point five percent, general fund. Moving right along to these budget comparisons by function. Uh, the general fund is down two and a half percent, and it is, so is made it down fifteen percent, that's going to be, uh, uh, reduction in that project. They had a roof project, they got, uh, well, that's a big, uh, item, uh, actually, probably. Uh, motor pool is down, uh, eighty point six, uh, percent. And, uh, that's basically, uh, nutrition and depreciation saving for the aging equipment. Cable is the lead leader up, and that is twenty percent, uh, but that is just balance of the budget. Uh, they have, uh, a, an increase in their, uh, in their revenues. And, uh, that money, uh, is, comes in on the revenue side, and also shows on the expenditure side. However, they do not spend it, because of capital, and they guess that they're probably coming back for, showing the, the damage projects. So, if that doesn't happen, then they'll have under spending budget, uh, expense side, and that budget will, that residual will fall to, to our council. Uh, moving right along, uh, major streets, fund, up the capital projects, uh, as compared to last year. Uh, local streets down, because they had to move some money over to majors. Uh, so, they're down a bit. Uh, municipal street goes away, that's a technical. We used to have a fund, the parents' money, and then we, uh, run it through that fund, and it's accounting on it. The new approach is get rid of those accounting entities, and, uh, the others and I have, uh, we don't have a dispute on this, on how they show fund balances. The outside fund, uh, history. Uh, some of their new nomenclatures are less, uh, less than informative, and so we'll be working on assisting, uh, the reader in understanding everything through, uh, the nature of. Municipal street fund goes away, and the monies go directly to the major and local streets appropriately. Uh, so, uh, there's no real change, it's about. Um, water and sewer fund is up five percent, but, uh, as we indicated, uh, it's worth a, a chart, uh, though. That, uh, the pass-through from the water and sewer authorities is up nine, nearly nine percent. They submitted a budget of five point oh three increase, uh, for the customer. Uh, we are working to get that to a little five percent, we'd be hurting, and, uh, as we say, naturally, they'll figure it out. Or A W will find a way, but we will get it to a little five percent. Um, block grant, it's a technical, we didn't bring, uh, in the, uh, the fund to come from, uh, uh, the flagship program revenues. Uh, we will approve those in the final budget, so that's a technical. Energy block grant, it was fully expended, uh, successfully, and, uh, so that's showing a decrease, um, but, uh, for good reasons. Neighborhood stabilization, we're awarded more dollars, and so that's up to me. And that's it, so the total budget is, uh, basically flat, uh, especially to take off the grant increase. And, uh, it reminds us that for other twenty-six hundred dollar operations, and I just think that's... Ten-year comparison of grant revenues. Our position on grants is simple, we don't use the facilities, uh, we don't lose them unrealistically, and we don't make bad deals, they have to do with rent. What you see is, in, in nine, ten, and ten eleven, we have substantial, uh, increase, uh, in employment grants in nine, ten, and, uh, ten eleven, as, uh, as they. Uh, otherwise, we kind of leveled off, and, um, we're not happy that the employment grants have not increased since two. We have, uh, they are, we've expressed our concern in regards to the civil state life. Next, we're on our history, our taxable values, and, uh, shows one word, it's unpressed, and another one, one third, uh, here. Charity wire, laundry landing, focused on tax base, that's, uh, the other thing. All right, so, you can go back many more years than this, but you can just go back, uh, like, stuff, fifteen years, it's like, uh, you got, we never had a decrease of more than six tenths of one percent. And that, uh, was just prior to full delay, taking the tax, um, and ever since then, we've done okay, uh, but it's got to be annual restructuring. Uh, but you can see what happens with the Prop A when you do construction stops. Reason for that is the, uh, great recession, this is called. Uh, but what happens, great recession stops new construction, and also, uh, you have businesses that are hurting because of that economy. So, they may, they, they may appeal their tax values, uh, that's their right to do so, and so, uh, we see that. Impressive, uh, where you get from. Next page, this is a composition of our tax base. Uh, the line, we're very concerned about personal property. Most cities, uh, probably just an average, they're like one point five percent, personal, we never, okay? But we are producing jobs, don't get me in touch. That's, uh, what, uh, this is what it's about, and, uh, I, I wanted to discuss it further, um, with, uh, the leadership, because we need to tell our story. I think I'll just tell a story. Three cities that create a massive number of jobs have suffered greatly because of the, the construction, the rules of the game, uh, absolutely punish. Uh, we're talking jobs, 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 and jobs, and then the punishment, cities are creating jobs, so, uh, might get some, 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 some terrible work left, and other kinds of things happen. But, again, so we're, uh, residential's thirty-five percent, and all the rest is, uh, sixty-five, uh, and it's a surprise of... The next, uh, ugly page is what happened, plus what we checked on. All right, so you're looking at taxable value at the left, taxable value losses, uh, each year, and you're looking, uh, at, over to the right, uh, three percent first year, I think, uh... Um, that's, basically, we start with ninety-seven, so that's the first year we ever had, you know, it's, it's a significant decrease in our whole tax base. And that is the unprecedented part. Next year, we got a lot of, fourteen and a half. These are, these are in the books, you know, these are not estimates. Next year, we get a lot of it again. That's the year when we went for a mileage, fortunately, we were approved by voters, eight, nine, twelve, but, uh, Julie Paul, at that point, we were figuring out it, four, seventeen and a half percent, staring at another thirteen. We were talking about some, some major layoffs, it's the only way we could possibly, uh, survive going forward. Fortunately, we got the mileage, unfortunately, we got much of the value of the mileage, it's been, uh, eroded by this huge decrease. Nobody suspected it could be this...